So now that it's officially 6 o'clock on my phone, we'll go ahead and get started. And so, call to order, welcome, and roll call. Item number one on the agenda. All trustees are present except trustee McDonald. I'm not sure if she'll be coming in late or not, I haven't heard from her, but everyone else, I believe, is here. So, item number two is the pledge of allegiance. So if we can stand and say the pledge.
I... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Does any other trustee have any requests to revise or change the order on the agenda? See, none. I do have one revision to the agenda on page four, under D3, which is to grant authorization to issue a request for proposals, an RFP. The language should read that it is recommended that an RFP be issued to identify a consultant to assist the trustees with the superintendent search. The next sentence should read, "The board will direct Pat McHugh as clerk of the board to draft, in consultation with an ad hoc committee comprised of three trustees, to create the RFP and the rubric for scoring, and then post it prior to 12/21." So, we just had the order in which the committee would be involved. They'd actually be involved in reviewing the actual RFP. So, everyone okay with that change? We're certainly going to discuss it at greater length then. So with no other changes, then we move on to item number four, which is to approve the minutes from the November 13 regular meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing no one indicating so, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November 13? Moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Kendall. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to trustees present. Now we come to public comment regarding non-agenda items. These are items that aren't on our agenda tonight, but which the public might have an interest in letting the trustees know that there's a topic you're interested in and would like us to hear about it. It can be anything that falls under the purview of the district. And so, we ask anyone who wants to make a comment on non-agenda items to come to the podium, identify yourself, spell your first and last name if they have an unusual spelling, and if you represent an organization, identify that organization. We try to keep the comments to three minutes. Any public comment on non-agenda items? So that was a long speech for no public comment on non-agenda items. So we'll move on to the health insurance, or sorry, move on to the community connection, which is a presentation from the CTA Architects on the design of Big Sky High School in Burley. I think you'll do the initial introductions, and then we will have the representative from CTA stay up there. So Jennifer, if you don't mind turning on your mic, that way we can capture.
Thank you. As we proceed through these bond projects, we continue to hit milestone after milestone after milestone. This happens to be a milestone that is our last presentation for our projects from our schools, so unless I'm forgetting one. You're looking like I'm forgetting one, but I'm not. So, tonight, as we just heard that CTA will be here to kind of discuss the Big Sky project. It's been a very good process, there's been a lot of discussion, and I think we're at a good design. Jennifer Courtney and her staff have played a huge role in it, and we continue to meet weekly on trying to mold it and shape it. But Shane Jacobs from CTA and his team have been working very hard on behind the scenes, and I'm happy to present, or have Shane here tonight to kind of present the design thus far. Shane?
All right, I'm testing out the microphone, kind of figuring out where I need to be in order to drive this and also so everybody can hear me. So thanks for the introduction, Burley. I think I heard "saving best for last." I think that's what I heard. So they, I'm Shane Jacobs with CTA Architects Engineers. I'm an architect, project manager, a Big Sky High School grad, and so it's a pleasure to work on this project in particular. To do a quick orientation for those mildly familiar with the building, kind of unknown when Big Sky originated, before there was an actual Big Sky High School, there was some business classes and driver's ed offered out on South Avenue in the blue building that was built sometime, I don't know what's going on with each. So the blue building was built sometime in the early 70s, and we don't have many documents on that. Big Sky formerly, commonly known, was created in 1980, and that's what you see in red. And in yellow, 2003, is the last edition. That was an auxiliary gym in the upper left, kind of center is courtyard, library, administration, and kind of that long skinny leg that reaches to the south is where kind of a counselor's suite. There was also a light remodel in the original early 1970s wing, so that's kind of the quick drive-by of Big Sky High School through the years. This is really our area of influence, and this is a simple diagram, and I'll spend a little bit more time on it and actually walk through a 3D model, but just to kind of orient you. We have a level of work at the front door, kind of the pillars of the project are security and safety at the front door, so really working on the entry. This building doesn't have any kind of vestibule for energy purposes, so we're going to be including one, and then that will also serve as a secure vestibule as well. Infill of that interior courtyard in red, which will become the new commons, i.e. the lunchroom, but also focal kind of center of the building that will help organize the other pieces around it. Right now, the lunch is in this beloved cafeteria. That's a word that was developed in the 1980s set of drawings for a cafeteria auditorium combination. And really, that probably worked really well in 1979 when it was designed, because you have a function of, well, we're only eating lunch for a couple hours a day, and then how often do performances happen, mostly in the evenings? But it's really evolved since then. Lunchroom has become more of a common circulation space study. We've done a lot of, we've had a lot of conversation about becoming more of like a student union building kind of feel. And then also, this Big Sky High School is actually the only double A school in the state without a dedicated auditorium. So it's really keep both of these spaces flexible, let auditorium be drama, speech, debate, music, band choir, and let that new commons space be kind of the main circulation organization feature. It's also where you eat lunch. Students are eating lunch in the same spot that I ate lunch, sitting in the hallway next to their locker. So your butt planted back against the wall on the floor, not using the lunchroom at all, just not the best space to be in. And then, last but not least, some scope of work in the classroom wing, which has really been, the definite pieces are that we've got some failing skylights in there. There's nine skylights in that area of the building. There's a lighting retrofit, and then there's, we have some kind of bond language that says we need to improve the building, improve the classroom environment in terms of flexibility and functionality. There's also been an indoor air quality study recently, and that's led to mechanical upgrades in this wing, so it's served by four mechanical penthouses, and we'll be retrofitting all those 38-year-old, I don't know what's happening between the link, but I'll come back here. There we go. And really, that's evolved into this diagram, where the heavier remodel would be in those core areas, which are the golden areas down in that light blue area, which is kind of the grater, it's like a 70,000 square foot classroom wing. And you see that we picked up some ancillary areas, the dark green, the darker blue, and kind of the rust color off to the left. Those are areas what we would consider additive alternates, where there's a great need for various HVAC upgrades. So those are things that if we have a good bid day, we would award those as well, and I think with that, I'll jump into something a little bit more fun to look at. So this is a building kind of looking from a northeast view at that butterfly roof that was created in the 2003 edition. And so there's not much of an exterior elevation, there's not much of a, you don't see much new from the outside in this particular project, which is a unique challenge for the architectural team, that the building doesn't transform necessarily radically from the outside. All of the main addition is, as I mentioned earlier, the infill of that courtyard. So, new glazed entry, and then this will be admittance and attendance, so that will be the secure vestibule, where we'll, you're kind of at a crossroads there, so you're admitted to go either direction if you're a visitor to the building. I'm going to kind of fly through this thing and make a couple people sick, maybe. Entering, if you're familiar with the entrance into Big Sky, when you walk in along the right, there's a series of display cases of awards and the various activities that get swapped out season to season. We'll upgrade those because we need to upgrade the structure around them, but then the new ones will go right back in their same place, seems like a really logical place for them to be. And then, as you work your way through, on your left would typically, right now, be that exterior courtyard, and as you turn to the left, it becomes interior space currently. And so what you're seeing through the windows here is the library, and it's a great opportunity to have a relationship to blur some of the lines with the library. As we look at 21st Century Learning, you can have some of those, some of the library functions spill out into the commons space. You may even bring some of the food into the library if the librarians will allow it, and allow some of these things to blur. You'll notice that there's a variety of seating in here, and that's really just for different types of activities to take place. This isn't the final design of the furniture, but these are some of the early thoughts that we would have, a collection of softer seating, we'd bring the ceiling down and have little corners of this space dedicated to different types of presentations. Furniture can easily be rearranged to support different learning modalities, as well as different types of presentations in different scale, and you'll see a couple more of those come across as I toggle through. You'll also see in one of these scenes, the furniture changes. So, trying to keep simple, loose furniture that can be easily rearranged. If you get the tables out of here, it can become, you can reconfigure the chairs for some kind of different presentation or some kind of different gathering. So as I mentioned earlier, we're really thinking about this space as sort of the foyer to athletics and the auditorium performance space. And if you think about that, it's really could be the cry room, it can be the area that bleeds over on a busy event. We're going to move concessions right now is kind of tucked away around the corner, and a lot of people don't even know it's there. There's a coffee cart inside the building that's moved a couple different times over the years. We're bringing them out into the commons space, seems like a natural fit for it, blending the two functions together a little bit, because there seems to be kind of a symbiotic relationship of the type of supporting spaces they need, plus their schedules seem to balance well. And we'll catch a glimpse of that in a minute as I walk through these. So you can see the furniture all rearranged as we went through, around that column, and it's a different, it could be a portable stage out here in the corner, so these are both flanking walls at the library. You can see that there's skylights, so we're trying to still bring daylight into the building. Boy, Big Sky is a quarter million square feet with so many exterior walls, and so we're just trying to get as much light into anything that we touch as we possibly can. So I mentioned the replacement of the skylights in the classroom wing. This would be new skylights in the courtyard infill to become the commons. You can see there's a number of spaces up high that we can also project. Conversation about what if we simulcast the basketball game, you come out here for concessions, maybe we want to keep food out of the basketball, out of the gym, and out of the auditorium for that matter. Maybe it all comes out here, and if you can simulcast, we don't, at least set up the infrastructure for that to happen in the future. Maybe we don't, maybe we don't need the, maybe there is no need for food to even exist in there, but you don't miss any piece of the presentation or the activity. So this is an existing wall, this blue wall, and we've talked about just adding some texture to that wall and playing off of the school colors a little bit. Here's a look at that concession stand slash convertible, convertible coffee cart. So the coffee cart becomes more fixed, and you get a little view into a flex lab off there to the right. So, trying to blur the line of, pull some of those classrooms north of that, there's kind of a really stark dividing wall just on the right of the screen that divides the classroom from the commons space. So, again, another kind of layer of different types of seating and furniture, trying to give this a little bit more of a collegiate feel within the budget and the schedule. So these students are knocking at the door, going on to whatever they're going to do in the world. So I think the, kind of the common conversation with the design team is if we bring it up to a certain level, it garners a certain amount of respect with the student population, and if we build something that kind of has a little bit of that feel, maybe they start acting a little bit more collegiate as well. So I'll do a quick spin-through, and this, I think one of these next slides is where we really run through a couple walls. You can see some signage into the gym, and this is going to blast through a couple walls, entry into the auditorium space. The current stage and back of house, back of the stage is largely remaining untouched. It's the rest of the space that is kind of the combination of eating and seating functions that is going to be re-envisioned here. So largely, what's in your view here is going to stay, but everything that's slowly being revealed is being changed. So those are telescoping bleachers in the back there that are about 350 seats, and then loose chairs in the front that are about another 200 seats. We're going to actually let it work as a performance space. The acoustical engineer has a little bit of a challenge, because if you're designing, like if he was designing an opera house, you would really dial it in for singing. In this case, you're kind of trying to find that middle ground on acoustics for speech and debate and choir and band and drama all to happen in the same space. So we're finding the right balance from an acoustic perspective, but we would be pulling the ceiling out of there and treating, putting in a new acoustic cloud system, reshaping some of the interior walls, and then those backseats are actually telescoping and could slide back. And one of the benefits of Big Sky that the other double A schools don't necessarily have, I'm not sure if there's another like it, because they've had a flat slab that they also ate lunch in, they were able to do dinner theater in there. They were able to put rounds with tables, or with chairs around them, round tables with chairs, and allow different types of performances to happen. So often, a dedicated auditorium has a sloped floor and doesn't have this ability to have a, you know, your meal would roll off your table if you could set up that kind of setting in a typical auditorium. So we're trying to play off of, this is kind of a slick little way to not spend too much money on changing the floor slab itself, but also playing off the ability that Big Sky has this history of having dinner theater, and why can't, why can't we play off of that a little bit and allow that to still happen? So, again, just flexibility in different types of, different types of seating for different types of performances. So you get kind of a look from the nosebleeds back here. So can I zoom back out, take a look at the building kind of macro scale? And I think the next slide kind of steps back in. You can see those nine skylights, it's all kind of a white model, and we've just suggested that existing, we've used white just to reflect that it's existing. You can see those monitors will crash through a bunch of walls and ceilings, but Big Sky has this unique back of house, they call them the cores, and there's a lot of circulation space in this building. It's got a lot of hallways for those 40 classrooms. So those two areas that are gold are the ones that were, right now, they're kind of haphazard storage areas, I guess I would say, unless Jennifer has a nicer term. We're looking at, it seems like a lost, a missed opportunity. So what if we could clean some of those up, let them be a little bit more of a breakout space that supports the flanking 40 classrooms? And it's also an area that's largely been off limits to students over the years, but it's, as I said, a missed opportunity where maybe they can become additional instructional space and used in a flexible way. So I think for the most part, we have some things that we probably want to keep in here, like chem storage rooms, and this particular one is where there's a culinary arts program where they store a lot of their traveling coolers and racks and those types of things that are equipment. We might want to hold on to a couple of those, but for the most part, we're going to, we're thinking about gutting them out and having flexible furniture in here where we could have a number of things happen from, and of course, we want to replace a lot of that storage that's just been kind of collected over the years, and there isn't really a rhyme or reason to right now. We want to reorganize it and probably have one storage wall and one presentation wall, and with that flexible furniture, maybe you can clear it all out, and really from each of these classrooms is 30 feet wide, so you have almost a football field, and you could do some kind of amazing physics experiment, I'm sure, in there. So that's really, that's really the bulk of the presentation, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? Trustee Jennifer?
Hi, thank you so much for that. That was really cool. I am curious about whether the Health Science Academy has any space being altered dedicated to it, and what that was like as a unique feature of this particular high school, how that was considered through the process?
Jennifer, do you want to take it? Currently, the Health Science Academy is down on the F building, correct? Most of it, and it's bled out a little bit. So the F building, for those of you not, for those of you not familiar, is the green block there.
I guess I would say, early on, we had a lot of discussions around the possibility of there being a north-south corridor to try and break the building, the main part of the building up into four quads, four spaces, for the potential of future academies. But I think just based on budgetary constraints, we weren't able to make that piece happen. So I think part of my next steps is to determine what classroom moves need to happen, to start to bring some of those, whether it's IB courses, Health Science Academy trying to bring those things together, but it's not part of the project in the construction phase.
And a strange question. Could you state your name and your role, so people watching would understand why you're answering the question?
I can. Jennifer Courtney, Big Sky principal.
Is there plans for future academies?
Yes, I mean, yes. I definitely have plans for future academies. We're in early stages right now, so I think as we work through this building process and kind of phase things in for our staff, especially as a new building principal, we are having lots of good quality conversations around what next, while the while academy, talking about IB and growing IB, so those conversations are being had, but early stages.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, are you guys redoing all of the skylights in the main core of the building?
We are. Right now, they're 38 years old.
They're dark.
They're a little bit of an old technology. The top of them, I've got this amazing picture of this, is a science experiment going on on top of them, there's some kind of lichen thing growing on top of it, and it's keeping a lot of the light from going down. That panel is 38 years old and starting to delaminate, so we're going to replace them all like for like. And we're just trying to keep as much daylight in there as we can. If we can improve any views or just connection with the outdoors, that's the bigger goal, because it's, as I mentioned, it's a giant building with so many exterior windows, it's pretty limited currently.
So is it going to be, are they going to allow the light to come in? Like, is it going to be clear glass, or is it going to be like the glass that they have in it right now?
Right now, similar to the product that they have right now, but that was a similar question, or that was a similar comment that we received in a staff meeting last week.
Oh, okay.
So we're underway and studying it a little bit further, and how do we get some more clear glazing in there?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just for comparison, can somebody tell us, I think I counted 550 seats in this auditorium, so how does that compare to Hellgate Auditorium in Sentinel Little Theater? It's a test.
Yeah, I think they're both under 300. I think Hellgate might be just above 300 or right around 300, but they're, it's just quite a bit bigger than what we currently have.
So what was the total seating in the auditorium now?
About 550 seats.
Okay, 550 seats. So, and it's that much bigger than any auditorium we've ever had. Like, what are the, how often do we see those additional seats being used, and what purpose? Has that been a conversation?
Maybe it depends on the success of the drama program.
And I think continuing to grow use by outside entities. I think we want Big Sky to be an attraction for community theater. I think there's room for the program, the school itself, to grow, and I think it will provide opportunities for our current theater program in and of itself to grow, and I really think we're starting to really think large scale at Big Sky.
It seems like 500 to 550 is becoming a little bit more of the standard, the new Bozeman High School is in that range. Some of the early direction was also that we have a theater performing arts desert on that side of town where you have the Dennison Theater, you have got Sentinel and Hellgate, and the Missoula Children's Theater, the Woma, you've got other options on the east side of town, there's not much on the west side of town.
Okay, no, that's, the reason I ask is just from a performer's point of view. The closer the seats are to the stage, the better. So the tiers are definitely preferable, but if you have to get to 300 people to get there, otherwise you're putting an audience 30 feet away from performers, and you know, if that was a part of the conversation. But I like the idea of definitely having a space for the community.
Just a couple comments. I think one of the intended uses, as I understand it, is potentially to host concerts, and in the other facilities, that typically happens in a gymnasium because of the limitations on seating in the theater. I also think with regard to your last comment about the tiered seating, use of a portable stage could certainly bring the performers closer to those tiers if need be.
Any other questions? Any public comment? It's informational, but... Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for walking us through.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Yes, and thanks, Courtney, for being here too. And so now we move on from item 6A to 7A, which our student trustee reports. So is Seeley Swan going to report? So I think we started at that end of the table last time, so if we want to start with Seeley first, and then we'll move down through Maddie going the other way, if that's okay, we'll just kind of switch back and forth.
Ashley?
Okay.
She's ready.
The number you have dialed is not in service. And try your call again.
I will.
Oh, good call. Hi, is this Ashley?
Yes, it is.
Hi, are you ready to give your report?
Yeah.
Okay, you can go for it.
Okay, let me just pull it up real quick. All right, you ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so basically, the 2019 basketball season is underway now, and the boys are off to a good start with their 3-0 right now, and they just recently won against their longtime rivals, Drumming. And the girls are having a good season so far also, their record is 2-1, and they've only lost to a non-conference opponent, which was Hot Springs. And both teams are going to play Valley Christian this Friday, and then we'll go to Arlie on Saturday. And so the boys are going to face the two-time defending state champions, which will be kind of scary, but hopefully they play well. But the school hosted their second of three blood drives this year on the 4th of December, and they had 21 people donate blood and got 20 pints of blood out of that, so that was pretty successful. And the next one's going to be held on February 6. The Leos Club also did a really cool fundraiser, so basically the club members brought in a bunch of different Christmas gifts and put them into this crate, and we raffled it off to members of the community or just anyone who wanted to buy a ticket. And total, the club raised $679, and then the Leos Club matched it, as well as the Lions Club. So the total earning was $1,858, all of which we donated to a Lions Club in California to help with the victims of the fires over there. So that was really cool. And the high school also hosted a mock election the actual day. us.
Thanks so much, Ashley. Thanks for being there.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
And then if we want to move down to Maddie, and then I was thinking since we're on TV, if you just want to say your first and last name and remind everyone what school you're from, so we all know, but if anyone knew was watching.
Hi, I'm Maddie Braun, and I'm representing Sentinel High School tonight. Good evening. As we approach the end of the semester, Sentinel athletics and activities have continued to excel. Sentinel Swimming competed in Callisbell last weekend and placed second overall with numerous top finishers, including Jackson Moe, third in the boys' two-hundred freestyle, and fourth in the boys' one-hundred freestyle; Caroline McCormick, second in the hundred butterfly, and third in the two-hundred IM; Caden Reynolds, fourth in the two-hundred IM; Ellie Gashweiler, third in the girls' fifty free; Bremer Deaton, second in the boys' five-hundred freestyle and one-hundred backstroke; A.J. McCormick, first in the boys' two-hundred IM; and Delaney Carlson, first in the girls' one-hundred breaststroke. Swimming also competed in Butte this weekend, where boys took first and girls took second. Swimming will be competing in a home meet this weekend. Sentinel Boys and Girls Basketball have had strong starts to their season. Boys won against Stevensville last week, and both boys and girls won this Friday against Billings Skyview, with Lexi Dedden leading girls' scores. Wrestling has also had a successful start to their season, performing well in Poulsen on December first, and they also duelled this weekend in Butte. Model United Nations participated in the fifty-third Annual Conference at the University of Montana on November nineteenth and twentieth, where students represented countries and discussed issues relevant to the global community. Sentinel performed well, with sixteen students receiving recognition for their superior performance out of three hundred and fifty competitors. Speech and Debate competed in Bozeman this weekend at the biggest tournament of the year, with over eight hundred students competing from double-A and ABC schools from around the state. Sentinel pulled off a fourth-place double-A win with numerous top-eight finishers, including Daisy Kalina and Jack Durk, fourth in novice policy debate; Cade Hedall, third place in original oratory; Nash Sauter, third place in legislative debate; Maddie Braun, second place in legislative debate; Jared Rosenquist and Peyton Riska, second place in duo interpretation; and Stefan Clement, first place in dramatic interpretation. This weekend, JV Speech and Debate will be competing in Frenchtown, while Varsity will be traveling to Helena for a two-day tournament. Sentinel's hallways have been recently filled with holiday spirit. Band performed their winter concert last week, and orchestra will hold their concert on the seventeenth. Our all-school holiday concert will be held next Thursday, the twentieth. Sentinel's Drama Department finished a successful run of their winter play, It's a Wonderful Life, at the Hellgate Theater. On December fourteenth, University of Montana President Seth Bodnar will be holding a talk for juniors and seniors to discuss the importance of leadership. DECA and National Honor Society have both coordinated fundraisers to donate to Sentinel families in need, including organizing a food collection led by DECA, and a points at a sale and giving tree led by NHS. As school begins to slow down in anticipation for winter break, Sentinel wishes the community happy holidays and good luck for the new year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eloise Mitchell. I'm the representative from Big Sky High School. And yeah, let's get started. So for academics-wise, our PSAT scores will be coming back tomorrow, I believe, for all of the juniors and sophomores who sign up to take those. For the first time in several years, our Science Department is hosting our Big Sky Science Fair, which they are beginning to kind of research for that and create projects, which used to be a huge fundraiser for us, so that's good. We mentioned this a little bit last meeting, but seniors are beginning to write their IBIAs, which are the huge summatives at the end of the first term. Senior papers, we just received back, which is a last chance to do the editorial before the final approval of our senior papers. Sports-wise, the winter competitions have begun. Swimming, Big Sky didn't get last, which was incredible. Extracurricular rise, there was the Model Union Conference as well. Countries such as Australia and Kazakhstan had placed in the awards, and one of our seniors winning in top twenty-five seniors, and another one in the top one percent for the position papers. Our Key Club worked with Pavarilla Center this weekend, packing to-go lunches for some of the residents there, and helping with cleanup and laundry there, which we'll continue doing that monthly, I hope so. NHS is caroling tomorrow and Wednesday, and gifting toilet paper to families, because everyone needs toilet paper. Redesigning our school store is coming up as well, which is, we are just beginning plans for that, so that's really exciting. And we had our cabaret show this last month, which was the biggest fundraiser for our Drama Department out of all year. It's a talent show that lasts for three days, and they did really successful with that, as well as a new form of our dance team with a new captain, because our last captain graduated last year. With the atmosphere and activities, our winter ball is this weekend, and along with the winter ball, there will be sales, sales with the concession stand, and those sales will go back to our student government. And through Key Club, they'll be selling a bake sale that will, the funds from that will go to the Thirst Project, which is our main project that we fundraise for, and that sends money to help send water to Swaziland. Next week is our Christmas Spirit Week, so each day of the week, we have different themes for kids to wear outfits for, and our Student Action Committee is starting to plan the documentaries for the Diversity Week. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Miles Miller, and I'm from Hellgate High School. So starting off, we, in the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the Yellow Lines policy. It's still pretty controversial among the students, and I'm not sure if you guys know what the Yellow Lines policy is, but students used to be able to sit in the hallways of Hellgate, but now there are lines on our floor basically that we can't pass during our passing periods, and we are required to basically sit in our new commons area, which is our cafeteria. And so student government is actually drafting a proposal, or solution, which is going to be presented to our principal next week. So generally, the premise of this proposal is that students will have to pick up after themselves, and there'll be certain clubs that are in charge of that, and if they can't do that, then it'll return to how it was before, because I know it was a concern that our genders were working overtime to clean our hallways after our students had sat in them. And then our teachers will also be able to shut their doors, because they were complaining about how noisy the students are during lunch. Construction was supposed to finish this month, but from the looks of things, it's probably going to be delayed again. Student government's still planning the end-of-construction party, but they have a lot of extra time now, which is great, they've been planning it for a while. Student government also did their annual Thanksgiving turkey dinners project, and they offered two free Thanksgiving dinners to two families in need from Hellgate students. In terms of academics, we had two kids with perfect thirty-sixes on the ACT, and we had eight National Merit Scholars this year. For sports and clubs, both of the Hellgate swim teams won almost every single meet so far, and they're set to win the state title for the sixth year in a row. Sorry, Sentinel, I'm being shy. Basketball and wrestling started their seasons. I actually don't know much about them, but I think they're doing moderately well, as per usual. Save, actually, this past month, made wrapping paper out of recycled paper, and they presented that at the Montana Made Fair. And National Honor Society is planning their annual winter dance this Saturday, and all the proceeds are going towards Climate Smart Missoula. Thank you.
Thanks again for such great reports, and as you know, if anyone other than Maddie, who has a different responsibility, needs to get going, because I know it's going into finals, feel free to leave whenever it feels comfortable for you, but we'll just keep going then. So we'll move on to Health Insurance Trust Report, which is found on page twelve. It's the routine Health Insurance Trust Fund Report that is for the month of October. And so the next one is announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. As was referenced in the student trustee reports, we're approaching winter break. The last day students will be in class is Friday, December twenty-first, and classes will then resume on Monday, January seventh. So it's, because of the way the calendar works, it's a little bit longer break than normal. There will be certain dates throughout the break that administration buildings will be closed, however, we will maintain office hours periodically throughout the break. The next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is scheduled for Tuesday, January eighth, in this room. We have two sets of trustee visitations scheduled in January, the first being Thursday, January tenth, where trustees are invited to visit Sentinel High School and Big Sky High School. Then on Thursday, January twenty-fourth, trustees are invited to visit Willard Alternative High School and Hellgate High School. And I might mention that the visitation on the twenty-fourth at Willard will be in the new Willard Alternative High School. We will have end-of-semester Professional Development Day for high school only on Monday, January twenty-eighth, and we'll have a regular board meeting then on Tuesday. I'm questioning that date, actually. I think our, let's see, Tuesday, January twenty-second, that would be correct, I think, for the second trustee board meeting. Three other items of note. Last night, we did the community open house at the new Jeanette Rankin Elementary School, and it was such a huge crowd that it was difficult to move through the hallways, and of course, parking was an extreme challenge, but it was received with rave reviews. People were really excited about the new facility. Six of us attended the fifth NILLS meeting, which is our network collaboration with other districts from around the country on teacher retention and recruitment, and it's being sponsored and funded by the National Education Association. So we were in Green Bay, Wisconsin last week, which was a lot of fun, and the meetings were very productive. Finally, I'll be attending meeting of the Class Double-A superintendents in Helena tomorrow, where we'll be working on our collective plans for the legislative session. Thank you.
Thanks. Now we move on to seven D, which is any announcements from any trustee. Any trustee have announcement? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. So it's the season when there are lots and lots of craft fairs happening at, it seems like, almost every school, so I would encourage everyone to look at the information coming home from your school, if you're involved in a school, and see when your craft fair is. CS Porter's was a couple of weeks ago, and it was really great. And another school in which I'm involved is at Lowell School, and their market is on Saturday, so I'll plug that one. But go to your local school's craft fair, because it's an important fundraiser. But the hip holiday market at Lowell is on Saturday, and it's a great fair with an amazing bake sale and live music all day, so.
Kind of a personal request. My family and I, over the last three years, during Christmas time, we have gotten lists of families and people who are kind of having a rough time, like getting through, you know, the death of someone, the year, you know, just anything that they're having problems with. And so what we've been doing is, annually, we get about, a list of about ten to fifteen people, these people, and go around in Christmas carol, too. And so we're going to be doing that on the twenty-second, and so if anybody knows of anybody that is kind of going through a rough time right now, please just give me a, just get in contact with me, and we'll just add them to our list to just go in Christmas carol and give them a little bit of Christmas cheer. Thank you.
Any other announcements from trustees? Well, I'll do one that's a plug for the generosity of the administration building. So they put up a giving tree, too, and they're helping families from Jefferson Preschool and families provide things for them, which include basics, like silverware and lamps and winter clothing and things like that. So if you happen to have any reason to stop by the administration building this week, and you want to grab a tag, I've grabbed a couple, they would really appreciate it, because it really isn't just luxuries that they're asking for, but really necessities for those families. I really appreciate that Superintendent Thane and his staff, Lenora, and I think Ginny and Hatton, whoever's doing it.
There's one in the business building.
Oh, and there's one in the business building, too. I came in the back door. So on your way out, grab a tag. So I just want to, you know, say that it's really nice that so many things are happening to support people in our community, so. And with that, any other announcements? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item eight, which is the consent agenda, and we'll need to do it in two separate ways, because the first item is to approve out-of-district attendance agreements, but there's only one requested, it's an elementary action item. So normally, we would just do both on the consent agenda, but this would require a vote of just elementary trustees. So on consent agenda, the trustees don't discuss the topics, because they're things that we see on a routine basis, but we do take public comment on them, and so the request of item A one is that the trustees approve the attached out-of-district attendance agreement. And so is there a motion to do so from an elementary trustee, moved by trustee Lorenzen? Is there, seconded by trustee Decker? As I indicated, we won't discuss it, but is there any public comment generally? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the item on the consent agenda concerning the attached out-of-district agreement, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to item number two, which is to approve the revenue and expenditure reports, and this is for October twenty eighteen. The warrants are available in the business office if you want to see them, and the recommendation is that we approve the attached revenue and expenditure reports for October. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Wake, and seconded by trustee Newbold. Again, we won't take public comment on this item on the consent agenda, but is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the attached revenue and expenditure reports for October, please indicate by raising your hand. And are you abstaining? Okay, that's now unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to old business under the personnel negotiation and policy. So A one is to approve the second reading of Board Policy thirty-two twenty-one, which is publications and distributions on or posting of materials. And as the board trustees recall, we've discussed this, I think, now twice, just because of the timing of things and some revisions we wanted. So this is basically the second second reading of this policy. It was set out for public comment, no public comment has been received, and a copy of the policy is included in the packet beginning on page twenty-six. Are there any questions for Superintendent Thane? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy forty-three thirty-one? By any trustee? Moved by trustee Lorenzen? Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker? Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting the revised Board Policy forty-three thirty-one, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to item three, which is to approve the second reading of Board Policy thirty-three ten, student discipline. This is one where we worked pretty heavily with legal counsel for review and discussion, and it was set out for public comment, no public comment had been received, and a copy of the policy is included in the packet beginning on page twenty-eight. Are there any questions for the administration before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy thirty-two twenty-one, which is titled Publications and Distribution or Posting of Materials? Moved by trustee Decker, and seconded by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting the revised Board Policy thirty-two twenty-one, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to the trustees present. And item number two is a parallel, which is the second reading of Board Policy forty-three thirty-one, distribution and posting of materials by outside groups. And again, it's been, come before the board, I think, twice now, so this is the third time it has been set out for public comment, no public comment was received, and a copy of the policy is included in the packet beginning on page twenty-eight. Any questions for Superintendent Thane? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy forty-three thirty-one? By any trustee? Moved by trustee Lorenzen? Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker? Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting the revised Board Policy forty-three thirty-one, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to item three, which is to approve the second reading of Board Policy thirty-three ten, student discipline. This is one where we worked pretty heavily with legal counsel for review and discussion, and it was set out for public comment, no public comment had been received, and a copy of the policy is included in the packet beginning on page thirty. Any questions for the administration? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy thirty-three ten concerning student discipline? Moved by trustee Kendall, and seconded by trustee Decker? Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the revised Board Policy thirty-three ten, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to item ten, which is new business, and there's one item to A- Then we move on to item 10, which is new business, and there's one item to A1, which is to approve a grant application summary. Karen, you're going to tell us about getting some support for the meat processing lab at the vocational agricultural program.
I would love to do that, but actually, we're joined this evening by Cindy Arnott, who's a member of the Ag Center staff. I do remember the great tour that we most recently had at the Ag Center, where we got to look at the commercial kitchen in development, and we talked about the possibility of grants to help get some of our major equipment. So this is an example of what we talked about. But Cindy Arnott?
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm a special education teacher at Big Sky, but I've manipulated my way into some time out at the school farm. I have my master's in Ag Ed, so that's where my heart is, is out at the school farm. We worked with Farm Credit, sorry, Farm Credit Services, thank you. They actually came to us and wanted to help us and be partners with us out at the school farm. And they came and took a tour, and they asked us to present them with a wish list. Their typical community grant's about $2,500, but they wanted to do something more. They thought our program was unique and worth investing in, and the kind of kids that they want to have work for them someday. So I worked with Tom mostly and Christie to put together a proposal for some equipment that's pretty expensive, that wasn't in the budget. And instead of picking one or two pieces, they said, we'll give you $75,000, and you can buy all three pieces of equipment that you guys need. So in particular, the pieces of equipment are a scaldor. That'll allow us to take roasting pigs, like you might see at a barbecue, and we can scald them then and get the hair off, so that we can, that gives us another option of marketing. Some of those smaller hogs that maybe aren't at 300 pounds, but that are 180 pounds, gives us another market for that. Another piece of equipment is an injector that we'll use to do prepared meats, mostly hog, but other prepared meats as well. So we can inject different marinades or flavorings or water into them. When you buy water-added ham, they've been injected with some water and salt. And the third piece of equipment, which is probably the most important, is a smoker, which will allow us to prepare our own bacon and our own smoked ham. And these three pieces of equipment particularly allow us to go into a real specialty market for our meat. You know, we have some big dreams of what this is all going to do out there. But that specialty meat market is, in particular, a high-revenue market that it'll allow us to enter and market to. Yesterday, we were at Rozar's and picked up a pack of jerky. That was three ounces of beef jerky, and it was $10.98. And we've got lots of ounces of beef out at the farm that we can make with the specialty equipment. So that, in particular, is what this grant is for. The way that Northwest Farm Credit came to us was from a public presentation we did with the Chamber of Commerce with their Leadership Missoula Program. They were doing a school-to-work training day. They called and invited us to that presentation. I happened to be, I like to talk, so I'm the one they send out to do stuff a lot. So I went out with a couple of kids. We presented, and that's what brought Farm Credit Services to the Ag Center and wanting to market with us, was meeting our kids and the fantastic stuff that they're doing. Okay?
Well, thank you for that. Sorry, I didn't know that you were going to be the one speaking on it.
That's okay, Karen didn't either. Tom said, hey, you don't want to go cook dinner, go to the meeting. And I said, okay, sounds good.
Well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Cindy.
At all? Trustee Lorenzen?
Well, this is a really big grant. Is it a loan or is it a grant? And is there any matching money?
It is a gift from Farm Credit Services. The only thing that Farm Credit Services asked from us was that we provided them with our HACCP plan, which is basically the safety plan and meeting the health codes. It is going to be, I'm sure you, I don't know how much you guys know, because I'm not always the one comes. It's going to be a state-inspected plant, so we'll be able to sell commercially out of the plant. And the HACCP plan is the required plan to meet the safety and health requirements. Northwest Farm Credit Services just wanted to see our HACCP plan, make sure that it had been developed. That is the only string they attached. That plan was developed a long time ago, and Tom Andries and Christie Rothie have both attended and received their certificates. I'm going to go this spring, as well as our farm manager, I think, and get our certificates.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Well, thanks so much. That's pretty exciting news. And so the request is that the trustees approve the grant application for $75,000 from Farm Credit Services. And the applicant is Tom, who's kind of the main, one of the several main teachers at the Ag Center. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? I just want to do a shout-out. I really appreciated the staff at Big Sky to providing us with the tour of the Ag Center. There's so much going on there that it was remarkable for me to see everything that was going on. And so I want to thank you and Tom and Christie and the rest of the staff for taking the time out. You know, it was a big chunk of a morning, but it, there's exciting things going on. So this is just one more piece of the puzzle. So thank you so much.
I'm back in February when I'll make these requests.
Okay. Cool. We'll try to do that. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the grant that will be provided by Farm Credit Services to help purchase the described equipment for the meat processing plant, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. So thank you for hearing. Now we move on to 10B1, which is a corporate resolution for authorization of signatories on the Special Education Petty Cash account. And this one also says, you're going to talk about it, Karen. Is that right, or is it somebody else?
Certainly. This is just routine. It was time to upgrade our signatures for the bank, and we determined that instead of two people, we would have four. So you see the names, my name, Virginia Haynes, one of our coordinators, Brenda Sweeney, one of our coordinators, and Shannon McWilliams, who is the administrative assistant for the department.
Thanks. And as I understand it, it always has taken two signatories to sign off on the Petty Cash account. This just allows, in case someone's on leave or...
It allows you to have different two.
Yeah, different two. Any other questions for Karen? Seeing none, then is there a motion to authorize the additional signatories, the two people identified, Brenda Sweeney and Shannon McWilliams, as additional signatories on the Special Education Petty Cash account held at the Montana Educators Credit Union? Moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Lorenzen and trustee Dugger. Is there any board discussion? Otherwise, other than it seems like a good idea? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to authorize the two additional signatories on the Special Education Petty Cash account, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to B2, which is to approve a Budget Amendment Resolution 2019-5E, which is an elementary action item. And Pat, if you, I, we've kind of talked about this in the past, but if you want to run us through it again.
You bet. And I've provided some of the detail in the background section involving the process. And so this is essentially the third step. The first was the proclamation. The second was the petition and approval by the Office of Public Instruction. And now we're at the point of final approval of the resolution authorizing the budget amendment. And just as, in terms of background, the amendment relates to the fact that we adopt general fund budgets using prior year enrollment numbers. And so when we actually have our enrollment count this year, we can compare to the prior year when the budget was actually set and make adjustments. And we, really at the Office of Public Construction's request, lean pretty heavily on them to do the calculation, which they've done, and then to identify the amount which is set forth in the agenda. And so part of the budget amendment is through direct state aid, and then part of it is through what we would pull from our reserves. And those amounts are delineated here. As in prior budget amendments, when we pull from our reserves, we commit to return those funds to reserves to the extent they're not utilized for the budget amendment. The resolution is attached to the agenda on page 35. What's different from the proclamation is at the bottom, you'll notice some account codes, which is required, again, by OPI. They provide a sample resolution. And these budget codes here reflect on the first line, certified staff, para staff, severance, and supplies under that first budget code, really looking at the addition of early kindergarten here, and then the fact that the enrollment bump is linked to, or the amendment, the budget amendment is linked so much to enrollment increases that tie right back to staffing requirements. The second line item is for curriculum materials. The third line item is a look at O&amp;M repairs and equipment. And here, as you know, we haven't had a building reserve now for several years, so we'll start seeing the need to pull on or lean on our general fund to cover some of those costs. Mark had mentioned during our meeting to discuss the proclamation, the use for snow removal, elevator maintenance, and inspections. We also have a number of equipment items that would be purchased and ideally purchased this winter, specifically Burley's identified some snow blowers and some other equipment related to maintaining the grounds. The next line, the object code 513, is for transportation. The significance here is that the special legislative session eliminated some block grant or state funding for transportation, and this would allow us, if we have resources, to offset actual to-and-from transportation costs. So as a board, we have to justify covering to-and-from transportation costs without having those block grants or without utilizing those block grants. And so in the elementary, that's a $300,000 deficit we have to justify. So a portion of it we could use here. And then finally, similar to the O&amp;M expenditures, we've purchased or paid for repairs of fine art equipment and maintenance of uniforms with building reserve, which we no longer have resources for. So this would be an opportunity to cover some of those costs as well. Again, with the same concept that these are operating-type expenditures typically picked up in the building reserve that's not in place anymore. That's all I have on that agenda.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Lorenzen?
Well, I guess it's a question. So they're allowing us to budget $477,000 more, but in reality, the state's only giving us 97, right?
Correct.
And so if we were to spend that much money, we'd pull $380,000 out of reserves?
Correct.
How much is in our elementary reserve?
We're about 4%, which is, it's, it's not, we're allowed to carry 10%, and we're sitting at about 4%. And it's about, shoot, hopefully I got it, it's over a million dollars that we have in reserves. And really, the timing here is pretty excellent, because we have a TIF remittance that's part of an informational item on this agenda. And with school districts, the TIF remittance is, can only be used in very limited ways. One way is to directly offset property taxes, and in this case, in the debt service fund. And then another way is to stabilize reserves. So we'll talk a little bit about that tonight, but we have a recommendation that we'll come back to the board with in a future time. So we're very, well, we rarely build our reserves, and we also rarely utilize our reserves. The opportunity to utilize them is primarily limited to budget amendments. And if, to the extent we utilize them this year, we'll backfill them or have, we have the ability to backfill them with this TIF remittance.
Any other questions for Pat? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees approve the attached Elementary Budget Amendment Resolution 2019-5E for a budget amendment in the amount of $476,768.20. Is there a motion by an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? See, trustee Decker?
Thanks. I think this is a really great example of one of those times where the financing is so complicated that it's difficult for people to wrap brains around how decisions get made about spending. And that you went, Pat had gone through the list pretty quickly of what this reserve is actually going to be spent on. And I know we're constantly saying that we, you know, we would do that if we had money or we would get to that, but this is, I think, a really great example of a place where really breaking it down, like all of us are five, is really appreciated. And I think we can do a lot more, too, around that. And I think when people hear that there's going to be $400,000 of spending that we hadn't thought about before, people start to wonder and ask, well, does that mean that I can ask for that thing that I got told no for? And, you know, really, when the rubber kind of hits the road, people do wonder those things. So being really transparent about what exactly this new expenditure is being spent on, and I think it's really well-placed to be able to say, well, yes, we are actually serving significant numbers of students that we aren't getting the funding for until next year via the preschool program. And so that's a cost that we're already bearing, and so this helps us offset that. It's pretty clear where a lot of it does go. I think just for even all of us around this table, these things can feel difficult to grasp. And so just, I appreciate that we try to make it transparent, and I would continue to encourage us to do that.
Any other comments or discussion by trustees? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the attached Elementary Budget Amendment Resolution 2019-5E in the amount stated in the resolution and in the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees. Then we come to doing a parallel action item to approve the Budget Amendment Resolution 2019-6S, which is both a secondary action item, and it is actually the amount of $590,056.86. Is there a reason why it's a six, not a five, or is that just a numbering system that the resolutions use?
Yes. So the previous resolution, you're wondering why it's a six instead of a...
Oh, it's just the sixth resolution. Oh, okay. So there's a fifth one. I just wondered why there was different numbers connected with the elementary and secondary. But thank you, Pat. Okay. So any, do you want to walk us through this one, too, Pat?
Sure. And I guess I would just say that it's a similar discussion and similarly identified use of resources. And would really echo Grace's comments in terms of having some capacity and ability to cover some expenditures that rarely happens, and certainly in the high school hasn't for quite some time, having a flat and declining enrollment. The other thing I would point out on the question regarding reserves that will pull in to cover a large chunk of the amendment, the general fund reserves in the high school are $1.2 million, which is just over 4%, 4.02%. And then the elementary are $1.7 million, 4.3%. And so the reserves will be the source of the large part of this funding, other than the piece that's direct state aid. Again, the page is 37 is the resolution, and then 38 is the approval from the Office of Public Instruction. The account codes listed there at the bottom are identical, and the expenditures would fall in line with those account codes. fall in line with those account codes.
And in response to previous trustee questions, I think there are a couple of points that are important to make here. The first being that we have continued to challenge Burley to not prepare to run immediately a building reserve refund, a building reserve request, excuse me. And part of that's because we're accomplishing significant facility work with the bonds, but there are still significant equipment needs, and there are, as Pat referenced, expenses that have been paid from the building reserve fund that we can no longer bear. So this provides an opportunity to still provide for some equipment procurement and to continue those services without having to go back to the voters immediately for a building reserve request. So it is very timely. You'll hear in the next agenda item about the TIF remittance, which also has direct impact on our reserves as well as our debt service. And that's what really is the perfect combination of conditions which allow us, I think, to take advantage of this budget amendment opportunity.
Any questions of Pat or Mark? Superintendent Thane? Seeing none, then let me turn back. Is there a motion to adopt the budget amendment resolution for the high school district to support a budget amendment in the amount of five hundred and ninety, fifty-six, and eighty-six cents? Sorry, I didn't say that very well. Is there a motion to approve? Resolution moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the high school budget amendment resolution twenty nineteen dash six S in the amount stated in the resolution itself and in the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to what has just been referenced a couple of times, the tax increment financing remittance, also known as TIF funds. So Pat, if you want to walk us through this, and as Grace said, this gets fairly complicated.
You bet, and thank you. The agenda item, again, is, I tried to be fairly detailed. I'm describing how this has come about. The first, and this is an information-only item, and what I understand is that the, at the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, when you make a remittance, as they intended to do here to the city, it resulted in a common remittance among all the other taxing jurisdictions who participate in each of these urban renewal districts. And so that resulted in a calculated two point seven million dollar remittance among all the taxing jurisdictions. And on page thirty-nine, I delineated each urban renewal district from which those funds will be paid. And I think it's interesting, just because it identifies on page thirty-nine, the date that the U R D was put in place, how much of the remittance would come from that U R D, and you can see it's spread among five. And where this becomes relevant for us is when we meet again and we make a recommendation to the board, our recommendation is going to be linked to the statute, which, as I mentioned before, provides really limited opportunities or options for school districts in terms of a tax remittance. And so we'll be looking at reducing property taxes and then also stabilizing reserves in the general fund is most likely how we will make a recommendation. The reduction in property taxes will be linked to our debt service fund, which is where we're paying the bond issue indebtedness. And if we were to sort of make a calculated allocation of the remittance, this U R D information will be useful because it'll identify the portion of each of these tax areas that are, that the bonded, that the service of that bonded indebtedness isn't coming from. So we can say the relative tax valuation among all of these would have contributed a certain portion towards our debt service and try and recapture that with the tax remittance. And in that sense, make a corresponding reduction in taxes that really equates to what would have been contributed if these U R Ds didn't exist, if that makes sense. I think, so that, the dates that the U R Ds are in existence and the amount of the remittance will be helpful for us in sort of looking at that on an annual basis and coming up with a calculation that we'll share with the board when we make a recommendation in The other piece beyond the U R D is a tax remittance or a tax payment that relates to some property in the airport district. You'll see on page forty, the proposed agreement between Missoula County and M C P S. It doesn't have all the information included because we'll want to go over that with the board in January, but the dollar amount set forth in the background section, and this would be a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar remittance based upon this incremental tax value of two point two million in the airport district. And this was just, I guess, you couldn't describe it any more than a mistake in including property in the tax increment financing district that shouldn't have been, that was, would have been property tax remittances that we would have received during that period of time. Again, we'll look at that portion that would have contributed or offset property taxes and make that same presentation to the board. I guess the only other comment I would make is that it's very fortuitous, the timing of these remittances, because typically, they wouldn't do much other than bolster our reserves, which is great. But with a budget amendment in place and in play, this really does give us an opportunity to use these funds and still maintain our current level of reserves. So that's what I have to say.
In response to trustee Decker's earlier comment, it is complicated to understand how these tax increment districts and the remittance might contribute to the debt service fund. So breaking it down to its easiest elements, if you look at the date of each of those tax increment financing districts, when our voters approved the issuance of bond issues, a certain number of mills were determined to be levied across the community. They were levied in each of these tax increment financing districts. However, instead of that money coming to us to pay down the debt service, it went to the tax increment financing districts. Now that we're recouping money through the remittance from those districts, we believe it's our obligation to go back and calculate how much of that payment should have gone to service the debt, had we been collecting that tax revenue all along. And that's the calculation Pat will do to pay down the debt service before we determine what other portion remains to bolster our reserves, if that helps.
Any other questions for Pat or superintendent Thane? And as Pat commented, this currently is an information-only item, because it's complicated, it's nice to have it explained before the numbers get plugged in. And so it's easier to digest in incremental pieces than all at one time, so thank you for doing that, Pat and Mark. So I'll throw this, any, no questions from trustees? It's information-only, but any public comment? Seeing none, then we move on to C one, which is to approve the personnel report, which is found beginning on page forty-one. Dave, although I noted there's a few resignations and retirements in there, anything else to note about the personnel report that's of any consequence?
No, it's a typical monthly report.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the items on the provided personnel report? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. We don't have board comment on particular individuals contained in the report, but if there's any general comment about the report itself from trustees? Seeing none. Public comment with the same consideration? Seeing none. Then all those in favor of approving the items on the provided personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to D, which are board of trustee items, excuse me. So the first is, it's information-only, but it's a reminder that by statute or by law, the trustees are obligated to do a written evaluation and assessment of the superintendent by Jan, February first. So what I, I couldn't find a clean copy of the evaluation tool that we had adopted for use in the past, and so there was one in the administration office, so I believe that superintendent Thane's office has distributed a clean copy to everybody. So if you didn't get one, let me, because now I have one, or Mark know, and we'll get you a copy. So the request would be for everyone to complete the evaluation in a written format. You can either email it to me or bring it in hard copy on or before January, on or before January second, so that we can then do the evaluation at the next board meeting. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, it's pretty much the format we followed the last couple of years, too. Okay. Any questions? Trustee Kendall?
If we want to give it to you on paper, what is the best way to get it to you? Can we bring it to the administration building?
Yeah, just in an envelope, so sealed, and then I can pick it up there because I stop by there frequently.
Do you have a box there or something? Or would we leave it with a person? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So item D two is probably in the wrong order from, we should probably do D three for D two, but since it's been in this order. This is an information-only opportunity for board members to talk about generally the process that the board wants to follow in replacing the superintendent, who will be retiring in June. And so one of the options, which is the next item, which is an action item, is to go out with a request for proposal, to ask for people to, or essentially consulting firms, to provide, request for proposals to let us know what, how they would conduct the preliminary aspect of the search for us. I believe that no one on the board was involved in the last kind of larger search for superintendent, which happened in two thousand and seven. And from information I've received from board council, because she was involved in that process, it's a pretty complicated process, and there's a lot of screening mechanisms that has to be done. And it would take a lot of time for us as a board to do it, but there are companies out there, including, you know, private companies, state organizations can help with that. So the best way to get a sense of who would best fit what we want as a board would be probably to approve the next action item, which is why I'm thinking they were kind of in the wrong order. But is there any thoughts generally about the process you want to follow in terms of timelines or things like that? Or any thoughts at all, since we're all pretty new to this? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess in general, I hope we can include the entire board as much as possible. I know there's concerns about having inadvertent quorums, but it's okay to have an ad hoc committee of the whole board if we're not making decisions. I don't want us to limit anything to committees because it's too, it's hard. The committee just gets smaller and smaller. And the same way with the search, if we do hire a search consultant, I've been reading what went on at Billings in Helena and Great Falls, and so I would encourage us to encourage our consultant to bring us a large number, as many applicants as possible. Somehow, three seems to be the number, and it's too small of a group, I think. We're a big board, we have the energy, we can interview more people than that, so.
Quick comment, explanation, that's why I amended. I was traveling when this was initially prepared, and so when it had that, it would be a smaller group of the board making the decision to bring forward the applicants. I didn't want to do that. I thought that a smaller group of the board could just work on just the R F P, because there's pretty standard language. We've got copies of the ones that were used in the past. Pat's familiar with it. I checked with Bea, she's familiar with it, so I think a smaller group can work on just the R F P language. But I don't, I agree, I don't want it to be a small group of trustees. I think we need to include as many trustees as possible in the actual kind of screening and decision-making process, if that makes sense. That's why I changed the way the agenda was reading, because I talked to Mark about it and Bea about it today. And then was it trustee Decker that had?
I think trustee...
Oh, trustee Service, sorry.
I was just curious, too, is there anybody within currently the administration, the school district that would want to apply? I mean, do we?
I think the idea is that we would, because we want to have the criteria set out by, either we could create it or a consulting firm could create it, that we'd want to give equal opportunity to anyone who wanted to apply and not necessarily...
Maybe in the district, too.
And it would be in district, out of district.
Okay, I have to make sure that we weren't looking...
Oh, no.
We're excluding the district.
In district, out of district, and in-state as well.
All-inclusive, is what you're saying.
Right. I was looking at, you know, the recent superintendent searches have come, that have been filled in Helena, and Billings, one by someone out of state, and someone by one in-state, and it looks like Great Falls hasn't filled theirs yet. So there's searches going on, and the candidates, I know that there was one article in the paper about smaller numbers of candidates coming forward, but when I read the article in depth, it sounded more like for smaller rural superintendent searches. But I agree, we shouldn't just limit it to two or three, and I think that's in part what happened in Great Falls, is they only got two applicants, if I understand their situation correctly. And then trustee Smith?
Oh, Grace, first?
Oh, Grace, first? Okay, yeah.
Thanks. I think that this is a responsibility that we have that's just of the utmost gravity. And although I know we all have lots going on, I also am really sure that this group is going to be committed to doing and showing up as much as we need to, to really try to shepherd and facilitate a great process around this, because it's, you know, if at a school, the principal is just an incredibly important leverage point, the role of the superintendent just can't be overstated in terms of setting the tone and setting the direction and the vision for the district. So I think this is just super important. And from that perspective, I think really taking time to even figure out what goes into the R F P for the consulting group is going to be really important, because different consulting organizations are going to have different standard operating procedures and come forward with different processes in mind. And I think as a community, it's important that we think about who sits at that table, whose voices are part of that conversation, how do we invite input from constituencies and communities within our district who may not normally have voice, so that we are seeking a broad, diverse, rich conversation about where we want our schools to go as part of this. I think it's an opportunity, but I think if we try to do something that is less inclusive than it might be, then it will be a lost opportunity.
Yeah, trustee Smith?
This is kind of more of a process as opposed to, I hope it comes across the right way, but it sounds like, and I don't even know if this is an opportunity, I know that the last time when Mr. Thane came on, he came from within the district, obviously, and I'm very happy with that decision. Has the decision already been made that we will definitely not limit ourselves, I guess, to, or to within the district? I mean, if we have an excellent candidate that we feel within the district, and that person is willing and wants and basically follows in Mark's footsteps, would we not follow that path of least resistance and least expenditures if that's possible? Or, I'm not saying that I think that's the best way, but I just want to, it sounds like we've made a decision, or somebody's made a decision, if there is a decision to make, that we will search, we will get a consultant and search, or maybe that's the next item we were going to decide if we're going to get a decision.
Yeah, that's up to the board to decide.
Okay.
Well, I think last time, as I recall, we, our previous superintendent left really pretty late in the year. It was, we didn't really know that until at least April. On his way out, he recommended that we hire Mark, and we were coming into the bond election, followed by the bond implementation. And so I think that was a sort of a handoff situation, that it would not probably be advisable to do that too many times in a row, that even if we do wind up with an internal candidate, having gone through an external process to hire an internal candidate, I think is probably worth the effort and the, you know, just for the process and stuff.
And that's kind of what I wanted to get out there. That's, I want to make sure that everything's just considered that way, and people know that. And I do know that, because I knew it, it was quite a different situation last time, and Mark is... And Mark has been kind enough to give us a little bit more notice, and we know how the dominoes fall with all the school hirings and stuff, and we do appreciate that, Mark. And I hope, I hope you haven't cashed off half of an dollar check yet, but, but that being said, I, I am definitely for, I'm not interested in limiting our search, I just want to make sure that we present why we're doing it and how we're doing it.
And so just to throw out a couple of other thoughts. The superintendent's job description, I have a copy of it, I know Diane has taken a look at it. And some of the language that's in here has to be in it for kind of legal reasons, which include that the superintendent has to be able to lift certain weights and things like that, but that's to make sure we're in compliance with workers' comp language. And the minimal qualifications requires valid Montana certification with the superintendent's endorsement, as required by Montana Office of Public Instruction, which in and of itself requires the candidate to possess a master, at least a master's degree in education. And so, so some things are there because they need to be there to make us in compliance with state law, so.
But a person doesn't have to actually be in possession of a Montana certification to apply, isn't that correct? Because most people who would be hired from out of state wouldn't already have that, but there could be that provisional timeframe, just like teachers have.
They have to be eligible.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. And so anyways, any other thoughts about just generally the process, or should we move on to the conversation about whether or not we should try to do the heavy lifting ourselves as a board, or whether we should at least consider whether there are options out there? We're free to completely reject the RFPs and continue forward as a board in and of itself. So if that ends the conversation about D2, unless there's any public comment about the process to be followed? See, none, then. Three is an action item, which I, as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, is modified to read that it's recommended that an RFP be issued to identify a consultant to assist the trustees with the superintendent's search. And it would direct Pat McHugh as the clerk of the board to draft the RFP and the rubric for scoring in consultation with an ad hoc committee of three trustees, and try to get it out next week and post it prior to 12/21. That seemed to be a timeframe. All of that is subject to board discussion and modification, but in talking with Bea and with Mark, that seemed to be a workable structure, because we are coming into the holidays and we also are losing the second meeting in December, because it is Christmas that day. But I think as Diane pointed out, you know, there are searches going on right now in the state for other positions, so the sooner we can at least maybe engage in a conversation about who's going to help us, or whether we want help. And so, any discussion about that or questions before we take a motion?
Do we have a timeline by which we would want to actually approve a contract?
I think, when we had some conversation, I think the idea would be to bring it back to the next board meeting and approve it. If it's approved at that time, go out the next day.
No, I mean the, the RFP, the actual contract for the search. Right. So yes, that answers.
Yeah, as soon as approved by the board would be.
Right, okay.
So it can happen one of two ways. It could either be drafted and sent out with a subset of the trustees approving it with the understanding that if there's disagreement, then it will come back probably for a special meeting for the full board to approve it. If you're, just want to have it drafted with consultation with the smaller group, but have it come back, then it's going to take a special meeting in order to move it forward just because of the timing of the holidays. So it's up to the board. I mean, either, you know, determine that the smaller group you're comfortable with, since Pat's been through the process before, and I think we've got very capable people who would want to volunteer to help with that, or does the whole board want to see the, the language in the RFP before it's actually posted? Because they're trying to get it posted fairly quickly. It's, yeah, yeah.
And again, I apologize, I'm in somewhat of an awkward position. I don't want to influence the outcome, but I would suggest to you that what I think would be in your best interest would be, if you do determine that you wish to hire a search consultant, the RFP be drafted and posted by the end of next week, so that any search firms, whether it be a private firm or a state association, would have an opportunity to respond over the next couple of weeks. And then you could, at the January 8th board meeting, look at all the responses you receive and determine if you wish to contract with any of them. So I, what I would envision happening is this just initiating the process, getting the information back from potential consultants, and then on January 8th, you would have the opportunity to review all that's been submitted and make a determination if you wish to enter into a contract with any of those firms.
Trustee Decker?
I mean, not having been through this process before, is it a realistic timeframe to put out an RFP on December 21st and actually receive back full-fledged responses to that in time for us to actually consider those on the 8th of January, over Christmas and New Year's?
People are already contacting us and are interested in it.
Right, so people are aware that this is a thing.
And I think it's a little like the bits that we would get for some of, like, either picking architectural firms, or there, there's certain information that you know you're going to ask for. And so that, you know, that those individuals who are interested in applying for the superintendent's job already have seen the rubric, or, well, that's for scoring, but they've seen the kind of information you're looking for that the search consultants would be asking for. It's, and I think Diane's actually been through this process in a different school district, is that right?
I don't remember using consultant, but I, I know, just to, one of our options will presumably be the Montana School Boards Association, they will propose as well, as well as private firms. And I presume that we will, they will lay out their costs upfront. And I guess my question for Pat is, who pay, how do we pay for that? So that, that's going to be part of our conversation, is how much money you want to spend, and then curious now, how, whose money will we spend?
Yeah. Last time, it was, the contract when Dr. Pasl was chosen and when that search went on, which was back in 2007, eventually the contract was with Montana School Board Association, so I have a copy of it. And back in 2007, it.
Yeah, $6,500.
Yeah, it's, so it was $6,500 was the cost of the search, and then there was a provision about additional fees. For example, if they have to go to onsite visits, if they have to do traveling, if they have to do background checks, the cost money. And so there's a provision that were included in some add-on costs. So it could go, I mean, and this is also 2007, so that's 11 years ago. But anyway, one of the things that Board Counsel is going to send me is just generally what other school districts, if it's public record, have been kind of identifying as the cost of using consultants. And that's one of the factors that we can look at when we're making decisions as well, because we saw that with all the other committees that we sat on to review other consulting firms and things like that. So, and the only one that's been through this process before is Pat, so I, I rely on his expertise, too, in just understanding generally the kind of question, you know, kind of information we would be seeking from a consulting firm. Does that make sense, Pat?
It does, yeah. And I was going to say that what I'd recommend is that we pay for this out of our general funds, the elementary and high school, and we'll code it to the contracted services. And then as we get near the end of the year, I would assume we'd have sufficient cushion to cover the cost. I'm not expecting it's going to be significantly more than what was last go-around. To the extent we couldn't fit it within the general fund, we could look at some indirect cost or some of the soft money to pick up that, that part of the cost. The, in terms of the RFP process, what we typically do is, is allow for two publications of notice, and then a, and then the statute requires a response that's no greater, no, no less than five days after the second publication, or no later than 12 days after the second publication. So as we build the timeline, we would want to build it based upon when that RFP goes, gets out, so that the sooner the better, to allow for enough review time by the committee or by the board before the board meeting, whatever board meeting you choose, to have that. So I think we could build a timeline based upon that sort of statutory reference.
So, anyway, just to kind of summarize, the reason that I suggested the language at the beginning of the meeting was to help facilitate the process, and everyone's free to have a discussion about, would you be comfortable having three people who are trustees work on the RFP with Pat in order to make it go more quickly in terms of being able to get it out? Or do you want to have three people work on it with Pat, but have it come back at a special board meeting for everyone to look at and approve it before it actually goes out? So that's the, I'm not one to either process, I just.
Can, can I ask a question and just say, who, who among the board would want to be part of that process of putting, I mean, that might be another way to, I mean, if we have eight or nine of us who are interested in being part of that piece, then maybe that feels different than it being three, or, you know.
Well, if it's a, and then there's a special board meeting, because we're, it's a quorum, so we can't do it. So it has to be a smaller number.
Oh, I see.
Or a full board meeting. That's the reason why it has to be an ad hoc committee or the full board.
Gotcha.
You know, it's, it's the board's decision, not mine.
Sorry, missed that.
Sorry, I forgot your name.
I guess, maybe this is a question for somebody who's been through it before, so maybe Pat, but in terms of what's included in the RFP, how much detail do we provide potential firms or consultants about what types of screening mechanisms we want in place? In other words, if we wanted to cast a very wide net that garners many candidates, I'm assuming that that drives the consultants' costs up because it's more time-intensive for them. So do you recall kind of how the RFP is structured in terms of what input we have as far as how broad their search is?
Yeah, and I, the, a couple of points, I guess, in response is that the, the previous time, I don't think there was an RFP for consulting services. I think that MTSBA was selected, and then they offered their standard fee agreement for the services, and, and then made sort of recommendations around the, the interview process and the timing that was part of the contract. So the, the use of an RFP, and I might be misremembering, but I, I don't think that was in play last time. I think it was, MTSBA was who we went to and used. And I, I think within the RFP, we could probably structure it in a pretty general way to ask for their, their recommend, their approach, the approach they've used in the past, their experience, their expertise, their references, sort of along, as Chair Holland had mentioned, along the lines of some of the RFPs we've done for professional services, that is, it's not necessarily a lengthy document, you're trying to identify fit and evaluate cost. And you can use it as an opportunity to really gather information from a, from a consultant. And then beyond that, I think what we, you know, what you have all freely seen is you can become more elaborate in terms of incorporating interviews, or it just depends on how far you want to take that process along in terms of the selection of a consultant. But I think the RFP could reserve all of those options to you as a, as a board.
This is partially in response to trustee Decker's question about the ability of these entities to respond. Virtually all of them have developed menus from which you could select specific services. And as Pat referenced, I think you write the RFP in general terms, so that you, as a board, have an opportunity to identify which services you may want to include as part of the search. For example, some firms might recommend that an initial step be to conduct surveys of stakeholders. Might be parent group surveys, it might be staff surveys, et cetera, to determine skills, attributes, characteristics that you would want to see. Some might do an initial screening and then afford the board to take a look at only a certain number of applications to do a final screening. Some might propose that they do the background checking. You may wish to have HR do the background checking. There are full menus. So I think normally you'll get responses very rapidly, because they already have this developed. They'll see the RFP, as Chair Holland indicated, they're already contacting her. They can tell you tomorrow what their services are. And then you can make an evaluation based on a scoring rubric that you determine that might include price and a variety of services that you would want to entertain.
Any other questions? Trustee Smith, and then again, trustee Decker? Okay.
So if I'm understanding correctly, Marsha, from your direction, the first question we have is committee versus board. Is committee versus board, correct? And I guess to help us toward that determination, and I would think that the pros and the cons, or at least some of them that I can think of, a committee can act a little bit quicker in time, seems to be of the essence in this decision that we're coming up in with all the dates and holidays and things that we already identified. I, for one, feel that I would trust a committee to get it done to my satisfaction for sure, whether or not I was on the committee, that's, that's relevant. I think that, obviously, if we do it with a committee, then the board will make the final decisions on, obviously, the personnel that we end up with and the, the group that we select. So that's my feelings.
And so that, just, so I'm clarifying before I, you know, hear from you, too. The question is, do we use a committee just to draft the, the RFP so it can be done fairly efficiently? And either, and then just let the RFP go out with just the committee's input, or have a special board meeting so that we all get to have one set of eyes look at it one last time, in case there's something that we want to change? But that would mean there'd be a special board meeting probably next week, which is the holiday week. So it, I'm, I have no preference for the process, but I just, I just want to declare, you know, that it either can be by committee, or by committee, and then by the board.
I guess I would be leaning actually in the opposite direction, that I feel that a special board meeting would make some sense in this instance, even though it feels like it could be fairly, from the perspective of these consulting companies, this is a routine matter. They, this is what they do, they have process, they have ways that they do things, but it's not routine for us. And I think engaging in even thinking through, what even is it that a consulting company is and isn't going to do for us? I feel like that might be something that's valuable for us to spend that little bit of time, making sure that we're all clear about what is involved and what we're asking for. So I, it's not a question of trust, because I know that every person sitting at this table would try to make great decisions about how to move forward. It's not that. It's that I think for us, this is a momentous process to be in, and I think I, I am reluctant to start it with the idea that we need to be as quick as possible as the primary goal.
So let me see if this sits with everybody, because this is kind of my personal preference, but we all make decisions as a group. I think it would be helpful to have other sets of eyes than just Pat come up with the RFP, because I think last time, we just kind of, the board and that, just let MTSBA come up with the rubric, you know, without board input. I'd like to have some board input, but not the whole board at that initial draft, just so we have a draft at a board meeting to start from. Then for us to start with some kind of, you know, whatever Pat would come up. Then for us to start with some kind of, you know, whatever Pat would come up with without any input from us at all, and then start adding our input. I was just trying to think that that conversation might take, it might make the conversation a little bit shorter at the special board meeting. That's all I was thinking about, and that's why I modified it, so it's not a committee okaying the whole process. It's just, that's why I use the wording consultation with the ad hoc committee of three board members, so that when the RFP is created, it's had input, but then we would, could approve it as a full board. But you want us-
Not until January, though?
No, like, next week.
So we're sort of pre-approved?
No.
I'm sorry.
I'm not explaining this well. My vision, as I see it, is if three people would want to volunteer to help Pat work on the RFP and be able to meet early next week, then the RFP could come back to us for a special board meeting late next week, so we would approve it. In which case, we would then start the process, and as I think everyone's saying, there are people just waiting for the RFP to go out to respond. And so, and there sounds like there's statutory timelines about the response time. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought we were trying to decide about having a special board meeting or not, so.
I, I'm revising it to say that let's have a special board meeting, from what I'm kind of hearing people say, and they just need a commitment that we'll have enough of a quorum, like, just before Christmas to do it. That's, I mean, it's just odd timing. Trustee Newbold, and then Trustee Decker, I mean, Trustee.
I don't know if anyone can comment on this, but, I mean, it seems sort of obvious, but I'm not sure. Is the way that we craft the RFP going to garner different entities submitting proposals? Or are we going to get all of the same proposals, no matter what's in the RFP?
No, I think you're right, I think Bea would have a better idea based upon consultants. I'm not sure if she's used any other than MTSBA, I imagine she has, but typically with a RFP that we would put out for services, professional-type services, it depends on the type of services, and it sounds like this is the type where we have people waiting in the wings, as compared to maybe architect services when the market is so active, and, you know, we get three responses. But no, no personal experience with, with consultants of this type. So I, I think it depends on what we're, with the type of service we're looking for, and how much of an opportunity we give for them to prepare a response. And it sounds like they won't need much time, and it sounds like there's lots of them out there.
This is just question and answers?
I guess my question was, we would have to have a motion to have a special board meeting, right? But I do understand Jennifer's point, we could put an awful lot of effort into this and get a stock response, isn't that kind of where we're at? And so, I want us to do a lot of effort, but maybe we want our effort to be in what we tell the consultant to do. First, if we want a consultant or not, I think is a question we would need to decide at a special board meeting, probably.
Yeah.
I'm going to suggest that part of the boilerplate language we've included in RFPs is that it would be subject to successful completion of negotiations with the identified vendor. I think you would likely get fairly stock responses to the RFP, regardless of what the language is. I think then that affords you the opportunity to review all responses. You could follow up with conversations, maybe even teleconference, some interviews, and then you could negotiate with whatever vendor you chose to actually structure what you would like them to do. I think, my personal opinion would be that that's the more important step than actually crafting the RFP. There are people out there who do this all the time, they have their menu, they'll provide you the menu, the critical point is you choosing what you want from that menu, and I think that's a full board conversation probably on January 8th.
So I was thinking the special board meeting would simply let every trustee take a look at the RFP language that has been drafted. I mean, if it weren't the superintendent position, we would turn this over to Pat, and, you know, and he would do it, because that's what he does. But that's why I was thinking to have some board input in just the drafting of it, and then the full board can approve it. Does that make sense, or is that what everyone understands? Trustee Kendall, you look confused.
A couple of questions that are running through my mind are, if, if we schedule a special meeting towards the end of next week, how many of us will be able to be there? And if we don't have a quorum for a special board meeting that we have scheduled, what do we do? And following that set of questions, I just want to say that I agree with what Trustee Smith said earlier, that I am perfectly happy for a committee to do this, whether I'm on it or not, and just let it go.
And that was my initial inclination, but if the full board wants participation, we would have to make that happen at a special board meeting.
I want to echo both of you, because I don't think the language is going to be as important either as the process going forward, and I would trust a committee to help Pat handle that part of it. After that, I think that Superintendent Thang's got the, got the right idea, that we're going to get menus from these people, and we're going to have choices to make, and we can make those choices when the time comes.
So if there aren't any other questions, I really leave it up to an individual board member to make a motion. Whatever, I mean, it can go up or down, and then we can talk about modifying it, but someone needs to make a motion to start the conversation, and so, and I'm not going to suggest the language of the motion.
I'll take a stab at it, first go-around for this. I recommend that we approve a committee of a minimum of three board, not, a maximum of three board members, but not a minimum, not a maximum of the committee, we can have Pat on it and other people on it, to assist Pat in developing the RFP for a consultant to assist with the superintendent search, with the caveats that Marcia mentioned before about reaching a thing, and the understanding, are you writing all this down in the RFP? I better quit while I'm ahead, huh? With, just with the caveats that you said, not, not to define the selection, but just to, or not to define the consultant, but to define the selection, the RFP of thereof. If anybody can put that in a better terms, I, please.
Sure, I mean, that's fine, I would just add a friendly amendment, that it would be the RFP and the scoring rubric, so, because that's pretty standard as well, but it would be helpful to have whoever's putting in the RFP understand what they're going to be scored against. So, is that okay to add that in?
Amendment, that way, there it is, ergo.
So, does everyone understand the motion now?
You do? Explain it to me then.
Is there a second? Now there's board discussion. Any further discussion, because a lot of it was inquiry first, but now it's the time to comment. Trustee McDonald?
So I'm just, excuse me, just curious, are we, if we decide to do a committee, are we going to make, select that committee tonight?
We could, the one thing I was thinking about is, I don't know what everyone's schedule is, so I would usually put together an ad hoc committee as the chair, unless people want to volunteer tonight, and if only three people volunteer, we're golden, because four gets us too close, close to an elementary school board quorum, so that's why I just picked three. So if we have three people tonight, I mean, are people comfortable? I see Ann said she wants to be one, I don't want to be one, and-
I will.
Okay, yeah, so let's, you're right. So that was a question that was somewhat related to the motion, but that's, we've got the seconded motion, and this is board discussion on the motion, and so, yes, board discussion.
I'm, I'm fine with whichever way the board goes on this. I weighed in to say that I think that lots of input all the way along is incredibly important. One of the reasons why I think that is that I think business as usual sometimes doesn't strive for as open of a process, or for as much representation, or as much emphasis on reaching out to diverse populations, as I think we want to try to maintain in our process. And so, having said that, that's, that's a value that I want to see expressed as we go forward, at every stage of the game if possible. And so, that's one reason why I want to make sure that there's, I thought perhaps folks would want as much of that as possible, so therefore, I push for as much of that as possible. Having said that, I'm fine with a committee structure, and we'll vote for it, this being the motion on the table, I do want to see this process move forward, so.
I just want to say, I want to thank Trustee Decker for her comments before and just now. And also, I agree, I think, in the process, and what my, my interest in the motion is a couple-fold, one, to move the ball forward with, as time, as I said. The second is what Trustee Kendall pointed out about, you know, where we're going to end up with the effort. And I guess, to boil it down, is we have a lot of energy here, and I think it's really good, and we can really use that. I don't want to get burned out on picking the wording for the, picking the RFP for picking the thing. We're going to have some good candidates, and I really want to use the energy at that end, especially, and I want that end also, to keep you as much open as possible. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment?
Did someone second that?
Sure. Yeah, how do you do? Right, isn't that right?
I didn't catch it.
Oh.
I did.
She did, I didn't say it out loud enough, I've been not turning my microphone on as often as I should. So, we have a seconded motion, we've had board comment, there's been no public comment, all those in favor of the motion to approve an ad hoc committee of three board members to assist Pat as the clerk for the board to draft an RFP and the rubric for scoring during next week? Are you here, Pat?
Yep.
Okay, and so, in the next week and a half, I guess.
Can I ask a clarification?
Sure.
Does that also include authorization to actually issue the RFP? Not only drafted, but issue it?
Yes.
I would like to put that in there, yeah, if it was not clear.
Second friendly amendment, and, okay? So, with that caveat, or that additional amendment, anyone need further clarification of what we're voting on? No? Okay, all those in favor of the motion that's on the table, which I'm not going to try to recreate yet again, and if you have any concerns, really let me know before you vote, and I will try to restate it for another time. Otherwise, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to everyone, every trustee present. And then, I guess a conversation can be about how to form the ad hoc committee. I was thinking people could contact me, and I could put together a committee based on availability, because the holidays were coming up. We've already got two people who are interested in it, if there's just one more person, Trustee Decker, and if everyone else is happy with the three people who volunteered, then we've got our committee, unless there's someone else who'd really like to be involved, in which case we could, it might be dependent on availability when you can meet with Pat. Trustee Superis?
I'd be available if somebody can.
Okay.
But I don't have to be on it.
So, it, it's not really an action item, because I was thinking that as chair, I could appoint the ad hoc committee, so those volunteers would be the ad hoc committee, and we're good to go then. And you can work with Pat to schedule things for a meeting, and then RFP and the attached rubric for scoring can go out. Okay, no special board meeting, and everyone can have a nicer holiday. Thank you. Thanks, and so now we come to the end of the meeting, sorry about this, Maddie, I hope you're not, you've learned a bit about how to get things done, or how complicated things can be. So, public comment regarding any non-agenda items, that someone who wasn't in attendance at the beginning and didn't have a chance to make any, seeing heads shaking, no, then we're adjourned, and thank you so much for your patience.